So several points there for the latter half. The complete relief is impossible. First, what does maximum available relief mean? It means that you're getting, doing the best you can. It means you might be going from two inches of casual water to half an inch of casual water. And that you have to drop in the bunker. And now, if you have maximum available relief, note that you do not have that one clubbing drop area, that you're dropping at the nearest point of relief. And the reason is that by the fact that you've already identified the maximum point of, the nearest point of maximum available relief, means that's as good as you're gonna do. So therefore, it makes sense to drop right at that spot and not with a clubbing. Because presumably, any distance from that is going to be not as good. So the maximum available relief part is different than with immovable obstructions. But as we did see with Rule 24-2, the player does have the option to come out of the bunker for a penalty stroke, keeping the point where the ball lay between the hole and the spot in which the ball is dropped. And that is, and that option of coming outside the bunker with a penalty applies even if complete relief is available. So it could be a case where, let's say, a player's ball's in a bunker and he has relief from casual water and there's plenty of room for him to take complete relief inside the bunker, but either because it's a very difficult bunker or because he's a terrible bunker player, he would rather just take the penalty stroke and come straight out, he may do that. If this happens on the putting green, say a player has casual water intervening on his line of putt, the player would lift the ball and place it at the nearest point of relief, not in a hazard. It's not in a hazard. So again, no one clubbing in that situation. Place it at the nearest point of relief. And then, what's interesting is on the putting green, this is also different than Rule 24. If complete relief is impossible at the nearest position to where it lay that affords maximum available relief from the condition, but not near the hole and not in a hazard, and this might be off the putting green. So if you think about, if complete relief is not possible, what does that mean? That means the hole is surrounded by casual water, doesn't it? And as Bill said, probably means that the committee should suspend play. So hopefully, there won't be too many rulings with that. If this happens on the team ground, you know, again, ball strikes a tree, comes back, and now is in casual water on the team ground, just take relief as if the ball lay through the green. An exception is the same, exact same words as Rule 22, in terms of when a player is not able to, was denied relief under this rule. If it's clearly impracticable to make a stroke because of anything other than abnormal ground conditions such as tree roots, or because interference by the abnormal ground condition would occur through use of a clearly unreasonable stroke or unnecessarily abnormal stance or direction of play. Note one, a reminder that just as is the case with immovable obstructions, the ball is in a water hazard, the player is not entitled to relief without penalty from an abnormal ground condition. So if the player's ball is in a burning animal hole inside a water hazard, no relief. He has to either play the ball as it lies, or with a penalty stroke, proceed under the water hazard rule. All right, 25-1C, which is essentially the same as Rule 24-3. Tells us what to do if a ball is, if there is knowledge of virtual certainty that a ball is in an abnormal ground condition, but we just can't find it. For example, a ball is in a large area of casual water, or a large and/or soft area of ground under repair, or ball goes down a burning animal hole. So if it is known of virtually certainty, the ball is in such a condition, player may take relief under this rule. If he does so, the spot where the ball last crossed the outermost limits must be determined, and for the purpose of applying this rule, the ball is deemed to lie at this spot and the player must proceed as follows. So again, just imagine the ball lies at the spot where the ball last crossed the outermost limits, and then take your normal relief. So through the green, just determine the nearest point of relief from there and drop it in a clubbing. Bunker, you have the same options as we saw under 25-1B. And then with a water hazard, just as we saw with 24-3, at the point where the ball last crossed the outermost limit of the condition is in the water hazard, then no relief without penalty. The player must proceed under Rule 26, the water hazard rule with a penalty stroke.
All right, you know, one thing with regard to this rule that I see in practical use is the difference between this rule and a ball that's embedded. And what I mean by that is, in order to treat a ball as being embedded, you have to find the ball.
Okay, yeah, that's a, that's a very good point, Bill. Is that Rule 25-1C covers the ball that can't be found in either ground repair, casual water, old cast runway made by burning animal reptile or bird. Now, the next rule that they cover, embedded ball rule, doesn't have a provision for what if you can't find the ball. So for example, if you hit your ball into a soft area, even say soft part of the fairway, and you're at, and you know for sure it's somehow within the fairway, but so soft you can't find it, that there's no free relief unless, unless the committee says, geez, that whole area is ground under repair. Otherwise, if you lose an embedded ball, and even in the middle of the fairway, it's broken distance, that there are no special provisions for a lost embedded ball. And that's it.
Exactly, you can declare that area whether it's marked or not.
Yeah, yeah, the committee could say, geez, you know, this is a real mess, and, you know, I'm gonna say this whole area is ground under repair, in which case, then 25-1C would apply. But if we does not do that, then it's broken distance. All right, so on, with Rule 25-2, an embedded ball, we are not going to cover that. Instead, if you'll turn to page 557 in the back of the book, we're gonna talk about the local rule, which is something that, you know, we use in all, in all the WSGA events and all the USGA qualifiers, and the PGA section uses it. And the main, there are several differences, but the main difference between this and Rule 25-2 itself is that with the local rule, we get relief for a ball embedded in the rock through the green. So for the rule, it's, it's actually the rule itself, it's telling you all the page. Through the green, the ball that is embedded may be lifted, cleaned, and dropped without penalty as near as possible to the spot where it lay, but not near the hole. Ball and drop must first strike a part of the course through the green. So that's the procedure. And what's interesting is, now we have a note that actually defines when a ball is embedded. It's embedded when it's in its own pitch mark and part of the ball is below the level of the ground. Ball is not necessarily have to touch the soil to be embedded, because for example, tall grass could intervene between the ball and the soil. All right, so several points there. You know, first, you need to know that the ball is in its own pitch mark. That if your ball winds up, like, let's say, in a landing area of a hole, your ball winds up in another pitch mark, well, that's, other pitch mark is just in the regularity of surface, and there's no free relief from that. And then, part of the ball has to be below the level of the ground, and there's a revised decision for this year with a diagram, and the same principle would apply under 25-2/0.5 on page 408. Where you can tell the key is that you, is that the ball has really materially affected the surface of the ground in the first two cases. In the last case, the ball's just in tall grass, that player's not entitled to relief without penalty. All right, so this applies only when the ball lies through the green. So if the ball is embedded, say, in the bank of a water hazard, no relief. Either play the ball as it lies, or proceed under the water hazard rule. Then secondly, when taking relief, note that you drop as near as possible to where it lay, where there's no one clubbing. So you're trying to drop just outside that pitch mark. Then a couple of exceptions. A player may not take relief under this rule, under this local rule, if the ball is embedded in sand in an area that is not closely mooned. All right, so what does that mean? Sand in an area that's not closely mooned. That means, for example, in Pinehurst, if you hit a ball off the fairway, ball embeds in sand, even in the closely mooned air, or even areas through the green, it's not part of a bunker, you do not get relief for the embedded ball. Is it possible to have, get relief for a ball embedded in sand? It is, as long as that sandy area is closely mooned. You have basically a fairway mower going over it. So it could be a sand-filled divot hole in the fairway, it could just be a bare sandy area in the fairway that hasn't healed. And if that ball is truly embedded, then the player would be entitled to relief as long as it's a closely mooned area, but not once you get away from the fairway.
There's a question, is there a procedure requirement for determining whether a ball is embedded? And I would say that the decision.
Okay, is there a procedural requirement to determine if a ball is embedded? Not, there's not a requirement, because if a ball truly is embedded, then the player doesn't have to go through any procedure. However, if the player has some doubt as to whether it's embedded, and therefore has doubt as to whether he's entitled to relief, then that's where that decision, 20-1/0.7, I can come up, that allows the player to lift his ball to determine if it's embedded, but he has to follow a procedure similar to that of Rule 5-3, in terms of announcing his intention to do so to his fellow competitor, marking the position of the ball, lifting it without cleaning it, and so forth. And just on his own, I'd be similar to a player, you know, if you're taking relief from a cart path, there's no procedure that you have to go through when you do that. So if the ball is embedded, then there is no required procedure. And that decision is there just to help the player in case, in case it's a doubt.
Is a waste area a closely mooned area?
Is a waste area a closely mooned area? I think the answer would be no, but I think one way to look at closely mooned is to think of that you have a fairway mower or something similar going over it. You know, so that's why, say, a sand-filled divot hole would still, would qualify, a sand-filled divot hole in the fairway.
So did release from an embedded ball in a waste area?
No, no, you, you, you cannot get relief for an embedded ball in a waste area, because I would say that the waste area is not closely mooned, because it doesn't have to say a fairway mower going over it, you know, going over the sand.
So any ball that's in a sand-filled divot could be considered to be embedded?
I'm not sure I'd say that any ball in a sand-filled divot hole is considered to be embedded. The ground would have to be packed there between the sand and the ball, I mean.
Just like the diagram?
Yeah.
Right. John, just one quick question. 20-1/0.7 just protects the player in case this ball is not embedded?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's a good point, Andy. Wanted to keep in mind, that decision 20-1/0.7, when the player lifts his ball to determine if it's embedded, that if the player does not follow that procedure correctly, but it turns out that the ball is in fact embedded, then there's no penalty for not following the procedure, just because if the ball, because the ball was embedded before, that entitled him to lift it without following any procedure. That the decision protects the player only when it turns out the ball is not embedded. Or if, in a really strange case, it's hard to imagine where, okay, if the ball is embedded, but the player decides not to take relief. You know, so it protects the player when he's gonna wind up replacing the ball and playing it. All right, penalty for breach of this local rule is the general penalty, so it could be a case where, you know, perhaps a player mistakenly drops a clubbing away rather than as near as possible taking relief. All right, Rule 25-3, kind of an interesting rule covering a specific circumstance, and that is dealing with a ball that's on a wrong putting green. And this rule has a different definition of interference than we saw under 24-2A and 25-1A. Interference by a wrong putting green occurs when a ball is on the wrong putting green. Interference to a player's stance or the area intended to swing is not of itself interference under this rule. That's interesting. And obviously, the purpose of this rule, sole purpose, is to protect that wrong putting green, to protect the divot being taken from that. And you could argue, well, if your ball is just off the wrong putting green and you're playing over the putting green, where it's clear that your divot's going to extend well into the putting green, into that wrong putting green, is the rule really accomplishing what it wants to accomplish? You know, you could argue that, but that is what the rule itself is. And it's interesting, this, you'll see, those of you who are in the PGA/USGA class will see a video clip on a player at Ridgewood at the Barclays tournament last year, who played a full shot off a wrong putting green. And I'm trying to remember what the television announcer's commentary was. I think, I think one of them started to say, well, wait, hold on, is he allowed to do that? And I think the other was saying, wow, what a great break he got, obviously he has a good lie. And, you know, so. But now, so the, if the ball, if the ball itself is on the wrong putting green, what does the rule itself say? At first, the player must not play the ball as it lies, must take relief as follows. Lift the ball and drop it within one clubbing field and not near the hole, then the nearest point of relief. So taking into account what interference means, where will the nearest point of relief be? It'll be just off the putting greens, since you don't have to worry about stance or area intended to swing. So nearest point is just off the putting green, drop it in a clubbing field that, not near the hole, and not on a hazard, not in a hazard on a putting green. Ball may be cleaned and lifted under this rule. Penalty for breach of this rule for all of Rule 25 is the general penalty. So when this player, the Barclays, played from the wrong putting green, what was the ruling at the time? Well, he was given two penalty strokes, and then what's the procedure? Then he'll keep playing. This is not, I repeat, not a case where the player has to correct the mistake. You know, he's already done a damage from the wrong putting green, and he will then just add two penalty strokes and continue on.
If you make it a long iron, what difference would you need to use any club on a correct one, if I could make a three iron or a four or a sandwich and play off the final?
Oh, so you're saying, why does this rule require you to take relief? I think it's really just for damage, and I think, you know, Jim, you're absolutely right, that on your own putting green, you see this occasionally at, when the British opens at St. Andrews, you know, players sixty yards away will take out a wedge or something, a full wedge off, you know, that shared double green to get to their hole. And, and you're saying, well, why does that not concern people, but playing off a wrong putting green does? I think it's just, it's mainly because it's so unusual that a player would use anything other than a putter on his own putting green. And it's really just to protect, I think, the other, the wrong putting green.
Six hole, but did he have?
Oh, yeah.
With the bunker right? Yeah. And I remember there was an interesting case at the, it was the final match of the
2002 US Mid-Amateur at Stanwych in Connecticut, in the thirteenth greens, kind of L-shaped, and the hole was all the way in the back left part. And one of the two finalists was on the front part of the green, and he wanted to play, just play a pitch shot directly over the bunker towards the hole, rather than try to putt up and around the corner. And what's interesting with that is, first, you know, that's okay to do, and you kind of hold your breath and hope he doesn't take a big chunk out of the green, but also, as an official, you need to be on your toes and you think, okay, you know, remind him, say, even though you've got a sandwich in your hands, remember you're on the putting green. So that means if you strike that unattended flagstick in the hole, you're gonna be penalized. I mean, that you should have that flagstick attended or removed.
A double green. At Wesley's, the tenth and the fourteenth green. At one time, there are two separate greens, and somewhere they decided that they were between the two, they would do some mowing and have a continuous green. When they first did this, they put stakes, marking stakes to differentiate green twelve, fourteen from ten. And then, in time, the mowing, mowers and so forth told these stakes, never put them back. So I'm, so the question at one time, if you were beyond this stake, you were on the wrong green and had to move the ball, and now when the stakes are full, I'm assuming that it's one continuous green, and therefore regardless where you are, you're on your green.
Yeah, and with the so-called double greens, that if the committee says nothing, the double green is the same putting green. So, you know, whether it's at, you know, so in your case, at ten and fourteen, if you're playing number ten, but your ball's near the fourteen hole, you might be fifty, sixty yards away from your hole, but you have to play it as it lies. But if the committee wants to, it could through stakes, separate the green, and say for the purposes of Rule 25-3, that these are separate putting greens, meaning if you're playing number ten, your ball's on the putting green beyond the stakes, then you have to drop off.
You'd be obligated to move that ball and take it from on a green service and take it and drop it off, under that rule, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. All right, let's see, but now with the decisions under 25, we'll look at a few. That 25/2 overflow from water hazard raises the question of, say, water hazard has been properly marked, but after a lot of rain, there's some water outside it. What's the status of that water? And it is casual water, that it is beyond that, beyond the margins of the water hazard, so it is casual water even though it's connected to the water hazard. That's somewhat of an interesting situation. Decision 25/13, that's helpful to know, and something to come across occasionally. If a bunker is being renovated, and the committee defines the entire bunker as ground repair, emphasis on entire, the bunker loses its status as a hazard and is automatically classified as through the green. Therefore, unless a rules, unless a committee specifically states otherwise, Rule 25-, the through the green relief procedure applies rather than the bunker relief procedure. So let's say that a bunker's being renovated, and either just on the local rule sheet, the committee says the fairway bunker right of the fifteenth fairway is ground repair, or they actually paint a white line around it, then that is, that entire bunker is automatically through the green, the committee does not have to say that on the local rule sheet, which is a, which is a very player-friendly move there. You know, and so some nickels of that is if you say that that bunker's now through the green, then it means the player's ball winds up in the middle of the bunker, he takes relief outside it. Let's see. Decision 25-1B/2 on page 393, which also has a diagram for right-handed player on the next page. You know, they're hopeful diagrams just because they illustrate the procedure for determining the nearest point of relief. And if we look, for example, on page 394, the diagram for the right-handed player, that's an area of ground repair, but it could, the same principle would apply if it were, say, a cart path or something like that under Rule 24-2. So if the ball lies at B1 in the GUR, then the nearest point of relief for a right-handed player would be at P1, and then the shaded area is the one clubbing there in which he has to drop the ball. But then, if the ball is at B2, the nearest point of relief is going to be at P2 to the right. And it is worth noting that, you know, players are treated differently, that Tiger Woods and Phil Mickelson would take relief from different spots, and would take into account their stances. And, you know, just one piece of advice while officiating, it's always good to, unless you know the players, unless you look at the clubs or you see him hit tee shots, if you just come across a ruling that's with a player you don't know, and first, make sure you know whether he's a right-handed or left-handed player, because otherwise you can look a little foolish. And I did that once at the 2004 PGA Championship at Christian Straits. First day, I was on the eighth hole, the long par four, and there was a bit of a north wind, a lot of players were hitting their tee shots to the left, but there was actually a service road pretty close to the fairway. And a lot of players were going over there and take, and I'd go help them take relief. Then towards the end of the day, player hits the ball over there, and I say, well, okay, you know, your nearest point of relief's over here, and it turns out it was Nico Hearn from Australia, who was a lefty. So I says, well, wait a minute, I'm left-handed. I said, oh, right, well, in that case, you go over here. And so I didn't, it wasn't very smooth, but it always helps confirm that point, because that can be, that can determine, but in his case, which side of the path you take relief on.
John, one question.
Yeah.
If the ground under repair is a smaller area, would you actually have the right-handed player see if he can drop it on both sides of the ground under repair to see which one is closer?
Okay, all right, well, that's a good point, John, and I kind of skipped over, you know, a pretty basic point, I should have, but let's, the question is, for ball B1, we'll start with this, then we'll get to your question, which touches on it. Why is P1 the nearest point of relief? Because it's the nearest point where the ball could be positioned that gives the player relief. And imagine, let's say, if this were a cart path, how would a player go about determining which is the nearest point of relief? In some cases, especially say when the ball is closer to the center of the path, he would say, oh, he would measure the distance from the ball to the point of relief on the left, and the distance from the ball to the point of relief on the right. So for example, in this case, P1 is the nearest point of relief, because the distance from B1 to P1 is less than the distance from B1 to P2, or P2 were a little bit north of that. So, John, your question is if the GUR were smaller, then you're right, and then the player might have to say, okay, your nearest point of relief over here is here, nearest point of relief over here is here, and you could have, the point of relief behind is here. So let's say you've established three possible points of relief, and of those three, which is the closest to the ball's position in the ground under repair? And then you might have to measure, is that?
I had, I had that picture where it was a tree trunk, they had wound up in the trunk, and they had a small, a smaller area.
Oh, okay.
And I think I'd like to have that.
I'm sure you got it right, John. But I, that's, in several cases, in some cases, with these two extreme examples of B1 and B2, you know on which side the player's taking relief. In other cases, you know, especially when the ball gets to be closer to the center of the path, it's not clear. So let's say, for example, with this right-handed diagram, if the ball were exactly in the middle of the ground repair, where would the, where would a right-handed player take relief? Right-handed player would take relief to the left, left-handed player would take relief to the right. And then one point to keep in mind with that is that, that might actually have to measure, but if the ball were, not so much, but if the ball's exactly in the center, often would fall into the trap of thinking, well, you either go left or right when taking relief. But sometimes, especially in smaller areas, sometimes the nearest point of relief could be directly behind, where, where, behind the condition.
A situation where you can go right and be on a sprinkler head and the ball is maybe on the right-hand side of that sprinkler head?
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, let's say a ball's on a sprinkler head, right-handed player and the ball's on the right-hand side of it. So his nearest point of relief is going to be just a few inches probably to the right and the back of that, and, you know, with the sprinkler head between the stance and the ball. And then he'd have one clubbing, and then one clubbing could get him to the other side of the sprinkler head to where his feet are.
Let's see. In the rules somehow, isn't there a real good video of David Page taking relief from a cart path, showing the red line and the yellow line?
showing the red line and the yellow line and that distance somewhere the ball lays to that potential near? Yeah, I know, you're right, there, there is a very good graphic in the PGA USGA slides of David Hayes, whose ball lies on the center of a cart path. And, uh, somehow they basically freeze his address position of playing the ball off the path, and move that over to the left, and then move that over to the right. So you see in each case where the club, therefore where the club head and the ball would be to determine the nearest point of relief, uh, with that. So, uh, you know, you could, if the ball is just right of center of a cart path, nearest point of relief would still be the right-handed player to the left, it would have to be a good, a bit of a distance, uh, right of center for a right-handed player to wind up taking relief to the right of a cart path. And let's see, with the decisions, so much of what we talked about in twenty-four dash two, uh, also applies to twenty-five dash one B. That's, uh, I would have been marking the decisions. Well, well, here, here's one to cover, the last one, twenty-five dash one B slash twenty-six. And it's a good one, uh, for, uh, for referees to walk through because there's a line haul. It's a, you know, somewhat reasonable situation. A player hits his ball into, let's say, a dry water hazard, a ditch. Um, because I think this may have happened at the European Tour event at Wentworth. Uh, he lifts the ball, um, and drops it because he's in a burning animal hole, and he thinks he's entitled to relief from that. After dropping the ball, he discovers his mistake, what is the ruling? Okay, so after dropping the ball, but he has not yet played it. So what has he done? Does rule twenty-five dash one B apply in such a case? It does not, because he's not entitled to relief when his ball's in a water hazard. So what is the only rule that could have applied? That would have let him lift and drop his ball? Twenty-six, the water hazard rule. So, as the, now this answer says, as the player's ball lay in a water hazard, he is not entitled to relief without penalty from a hole made by a burning animal. However, uh, he was allowed to proceed under the water hazard rule. Uh, the player dropped under an inapplicable rule, so he may correct his mistake under rule twenty-six, so-called eraser rule. So he could either lift the ball and replace it, in which case he would incur one penalty stroke under rule eighteen dash two, or he could proceed under, uh, rule twenty-six, the water hazard rule, incurring the penalty stroke prescribed by that rule, but with no penalty under rule eighteen dash two. All right, now, the decision doesn't cover it, but what would the answer be if the player, uh, hadn't realized his mistake until after he had played from the water hazard? So he, uh, didn't know he was in the water hazard, took relief from a burning animal hole, and then he dropped inside the hazard and played. So now he's played under an inapplicable rule. Uh, how, how would the committee rule in that case? Well, what the committee would say is, okay, what rule would have allowed the, what rule could the player have proceeded under? Answer would be rule twenty-six. So then they would say, okay, we're gonna judge him by the relief options under rule twenty-six. Say, okay, none of the relief options under rule twenty-six allowed him to drop and play from inside the water hazard. So he's played from the wrong place, so match play loses the hole. And stroke play, well, uh, he'll likely wind up with a total penalty of three strokes. He'll get one penalty stroke for taking relief from the water hazard, and then two more penalty strokes for playing from the wrong place under the water hazard rule. You know, we'll, we'll assume there's no serious breach of that. All right, let's see, decision on the other page, opposite page, twenty-five dash one C slash one point five. And a clarification of point where ball last crossed outermost limits of abnormal ground condition. Which is interesting, but notice that we have to talk about outermost limits, we can't talk about margins, because margin has waters that not extend vertically upwards, so we have to use our outermost limits. So the question is, uh, is it point A where the ball splashed down, or is it point B? Uh, and the answer is it's at point B. So both under twenty-four dash three and under twenty-five dash one C, it really is helpful to think of things from an aerial view perspective. And let's see, yeah, we talked about twenty-five dash two slash zero point five, when balls embedded in ground. Now, on the opposite page, twenty-five dash two slash two point five. Uh, it's a good one, especially for referees to know, when playing really soggy conditions, or you just have a really, uh, uh, low part of a fairway. Let's say the player's taking relief from embedded ball and drops the ball and beds. And let's say he, so he's allowed to lift the ball, clean it, and drop it again. But now, let's say, each time, uh, he drops the ball and beds. Because at some point, you need the player to, you know, play and, uh, keep things moving. Well, if the ball embeds when dropped, and it embeds again when re-dropped, the player may in equity place the ball as near as possible to the spot where embedded when re-dropped, but not near the hole. If the player drops the ball more than twice, the ball embeds each time, then he becomes aware he's entitled to place it, and may still place it nearest possible where embedded on the second drop. So it's a little bit, uh, it's a bit of an application of rule twenty dash two C, where the principle of it of dropping twice and then placing. And again, that's largely there just for expediency, that to keep things moving. All right, so that's rule twenty-five, any questions on that? Again, very similar to rule twenty-four, uh, dash two. All right, on to, uh, rule twenty-six and water hazards. Uh, rule twenty-six dash one, uh, it's a question of fact whether ball that hasn't been found, after it had been struck toward a water hazard is in the hazard. In the absence of knowledge or virtual certainty, the player must proceed under rule twenty-seven dash one. Uh, but if it, a ball is found in the hazard, or if it's known or virtually certain that the ball that has not been found is in the water hazard, the player, uh, may proceed as follows. And these options will, uh, are broken up depending on the type of water hazard it is. For a yellow water hazard, a so-called regular water hazard, uh, the player has two relief options. First is to proceed under the stroke and distance provision. And the second is to drop the ball behind the water hazard, keeping the point at which the original ball last crossed the margin of the hazard directly between the hole and the spot on which the ball's dropped, no limit as to how far back to go. And occasionally, especially with a yellow water hazard, the committee may have and give the player an additional option of a dropping zone. So with all that in mind, it's, uh, it's, you know, always interesting, say during the, uh, Masters week, when you see balls on, say, holes twelve and fifteen, hit up by the green and then roll or spin back into the water hazard. You know, people would get all upset, and then the players then go back on the tee side and drop a hundred yards away and hit a full pitch shot to the green, say, jeez, you know, these pros don't know anything, why don't they go up and drop within two club links where the ball went in the, last crossed the hazard margin up by the green, just get up and down for a bogey. Uh, and the reason for that is those two hazards are marked yellow, so the two club link auction does not exist. We'll see that next with C, but that's just for a lateral water hazard. Uh, so in this case, on, say, twelve and fifteen at Augusta, well, let's say on twelve, for part three, if ball hits up by a green, rolls back into the hazard, uh, player can either replay from the tee under stroke and distance, so he plays his third shot from the tee. He could drop behind the hazard, draw a line from the hole through the point where the ball last crossed the hazard margin, which is on the green side, but he has to drop behind the hazard. Uh, or they also give the player a dropping zone by local rule as an additional option. Now, if, if the hazard is marked red as a lateral water hazard, the player still has options A and B. Uh, and that's important to keep in mind, because occasionally, especially B, uh, that could be a, a better option than, uh, the C options. But he also has these two other options, uh, just for lateral water hazard. Drop within two club links where the ball last crossed the hazard margin. Um, or the drop within two club links at a point on the opposite margin of the water hazard equidistant from the hole, uh, than that point. So certainly the first one, dropping within two club links of where the ball last crossed the hazard margin, is by far the most commonly used option. And it's the best, but it's not always the best. And this, uh, the last option of dropping within two club links of a point on the opposite margin, equidistant from the hole, where the ball last crossed the hazard margin, is there really for the rare situation where, say, a player's ball might hit on the far side of a creek and then kick back in. So, so to let the player drop essentially on the fairway side of the creek, if the creek's running parallel to the hole, when he might not be able physically to get to the other side of the creek. So I, so those are options that, you know, we're all pretty familiar with, and all just on one penalty stroke. Now, uh, rule twenty-six dash two, which, uh, adds a twist to everything. Talks about the case where a ball is, lies in a water hazard and the player plays it from the water hazard. And one of two things happens. Either it, or actually one or more, two things. Either it stays in that hazard, or it goes into another water hazard, and the player doesn't want to play it from either. Or he hits the ball out of the hazard, and he either loses it outside the hazard, he goes out of bounds, or it, uh, or he games it unplayable and wants to use the stroke and distance option for the unplayable ball option. And, uh, this rule, rule twenty-six dash two, has been rewritten for this year. The application of it has not changed at all, but it is now in a much friendlier format, easier to, uh, easier to understand, so let's go through that. And also with that, keep in mind, it's worth jotting down the margin, decision twenty-six dash two slash one, which has a helpful, uh, diagram uh, with that. In fact, let's, let's just even look at that decision, look at that diagram, and go through the two, uh, the two sections of the rule. It's on page four twenty-eight. Let's say a player from the tee hits the ball to point A. And then from point A, he plays it, and ball comes rest at point X. And now the ball's in three feet of water, and he can't play it. So what are his relief options? Well, without even worrying about twenty-six dash two, just under twenty-six dash one, let's say this is a yellow water hazard. Uh, what are his options? Stroke and distance, uh, which would take him where, to point A, so he could go back and drop a ball at point A. Or he still has under twenty-six dash one B, the option of dropping on line E, which is a line formed from the hole through the point where the ball last crossed the hazard margin going back as far as, now he wants. So he has those two options under rule twenty-six dash one. But what twenty-six dash two adds, it adds the additional option of letting him return, also for just one penalty stroke, to the spot where he last played from outside the water hazard, which in this case would be the team ground. So if the player's lot, ball lies at point X, he has three options of where to go, each one with just one penalty stroke. He could go to point A, he could go to the line EE, or he could return to the tee. Now, the, the one wrinkle in this rule is what the procedure is. If the player goes to point A, drops a ball at point A, but then can't play it from point A. Well, then, he still has the options to go to EE or to the tee. But if he were to do that, it would cost him one more penalty stroke. So in other words, if the player, player's ball, he hits it from the tee to A, from A to X, and then if he immediately comes to line EE or to the team ground, he would do so for just one penalty stroke, and at his next stroke, then would be his, his fourth. Because he's played two strokes, incurred one penalty stroke, he'd be playing his fourth. But if he were to, uh, go from X, drop a ball at point A, well, at point A, what would he then lie? He would lie three there. And then if, from point A, if he wants to come out to line EE or to the team ground, that'd be for one more penalty stroke. So what does all that mean? In this case, dropping at point A is a gamble, it's a one-stroke gamble. That if he gets a good lie, and can play it from there, you know, it might be worthwhile, but if he can't play it from there, he's cost himself one penalty stroke. So that's when the player's kept the ball in the same hazard. Now, let's look at ball B in the same diagram, where the player has played from the team ground, ball comes rest in the hazard, and he plays from the hazard, but now he hits it out of bounds, he hits it over the green, out of bounds to point Y. So, and we know under that, the out-of-bounds rule, that there's just one procedure, and that's stroke and distance. So we know that no matter what, the player's going to incur one penalty stroke for going out of bounds. So if we use only that of bounds rule, where, uh, would the player go? Back, back to point B, which is an inside of water hazard. So what if he drops the ball at, or drops a ball at point B and then can't play the ball, or he just doesn't even want to try it again? Well, he's in, he's in a water hazard, so what are his, water hazard, uh, relief options? Well, he could drop long line FF, which is still the point where the ball last crossed the hazard margin. Or, as an additional option under rule twenty-six dash two, he can return to the team ground. But what's interesting with this, and the difference between, uh, twenty-six dash two A and twenty-six dash two B, is that with twenty-six dash two B, there's another rule involved. Twenty-six dash two A involves only rule twenty-six. But twenty-six dash two B involves another rule, in this example, the out-of-bounds rule. So therefore, if the player does want to come back to line FF or to the team ground, it's going to cost him another penalty stroke for a total penalty of two strokes. And the reason for that is that he has to have the penalty stroke for going out of bounds. And then if he wants to take relief from the water hazard also, that's a separate condition, now it involves one more penalty stroke. And what's interesting with that is that since the player's already obligated to, uh, incur the penalty stroke under the out-of-bounds rule, that there's no risk, there's no gamble to drop a ball at point B. That if he just goes and, uh, drops a ball at point B, he could do so. Maybe he, he gets good bouncing, he can play the ball from there, and he can void a penalty stroke under rule twenty-six. But on the other hand, if he drops at point B and the ball goes into a foot of water, then, uh, and he elects to come, say, out to line FF to drop the ball, then he can do so for one penalty stroke. But likewise, if you want to go off I directly to FF, or from Y directly to the team ground, it'd be the same result with a total penalty of two strokes, one under the out-of-bounds rule and one under the water hazard rule. Uh, so that's the main, uh, difference between, between those two, uh, those two sections.
So there's no penalty under twenty-six to be for dropping a ball at point B and then not playing it?
Uh, that, that's right, because no matter what, the player has to go back to point B. Uh, and he doesn't physically have to drop a ball there, but under that of bounds rule, he's stuck with that penalty stroke. So therefore, if he drops the ball there, he could drop it there, heard one penalty stroke, and then he'd say, hey, my ball's in a border hazard, and take relief options. Or he could say, I don't even want to try that again, just go directly out of the hazard. All right, uh, let's see. Penalty for breach of the rule is the general penalty. So let's say if a player opts and plays from wrong place, let's say three club links from a lateral water hazard, or if he, um, let's say places a ball and he should have dropped it, that'd be a general penalty. Now, we'll look at some decisions. And see, earlier we looked at, or under twenty-four, we looked at decision twenty-six dash one slash one, meaning known or virtually certain, which is a, a good one to know. Now, let's look at a few decisions that are related, but each one has a significant, uh, factual difference. Starting with decision twenty-six dash one slash three. A player believed his ball had come to rest in a water hazard. He searched for about a minute, but did not find his ball. He therefore dropped another ball behind the hazard under rule twenty-six dash one. He therefore dropped another ball behind the hazard under rule twenty-six dash one and played it. He then found the original ball outside the hazard within five minutes of having begun to search for it. What's the ruling? All right. So from that question, do we know enough facts to provide a clear answer?
No.
No, because what don't we know? Yeah, well, whether it's known or virtually certain that his ball was in the water hazard. So therefore, the answer is going to be too broad, saying if it was known or virtually certain, this is the answer, and if it was not, that is the answer. All right, and we know that, uh, no matter what, he's not going to be able to play the original ball. Right, and the once he's dropped and played the substitute ball. So when the player dropped and played another ball behind the hazard, it became the ball in play and the original ball was lost. If it was known or virtually certain that the original ball was in the water hazard, well, the rules allowed the player to do what he did and he didn't do anything wrong. Uh, in the absence of knowledge or virtual certainty that the ball was in the water hazard, the player was required to put a ball into play under rule twenty-seven dash one, uh, stroking distance. And playing the ball dropped under rule twenty-six dash one, uh, let's say B, uh, the player played from the wrong place. So if that's the case, so without knowledge or virtual certainty, match play, he loses the hole and the stroke played, he incurs a penalty, uh, two, he incurs the stroking distance penalty and two more penalty strokes for playing from the wrong place. And then the committee needs to determine if that was a serious breach of playing from the wrong place or the chance that it was a serious breach. For example, if this is in the landing area of a par four and he has T shot two hundred and fifty yards up there and without knowledge or virtual certainty dropped the ball, they are played, when in fact, he should have been playing from the tee ground, then that would be a serious breach of, of playing from the wrong place. So that's, uh, and that, that decision is a helpful one because it covers both aspects. When it is and is not known or virtually certain. Now let's look at the, uh, next one. Twenty-six dash one slash three point five. Player's ball is struck towards a water hazard. It is known or virtually certain that the ball is in the water hazard. And he drops a ball under rule twenty-six dash one B. So so far, the rules allow him to do what he did. Yep. Before he plays the drop ball and within five minutes, his original ball is found. What is the ruling? All right, uh, answer, as it was known or virtually certain that the ball was in the water hazard, when he put the substitute ball into play, that ball was correctly substituted and he will continue with that ball. He may not play the original ball. But it goes on to say that if the original ball was found in the water hazard and this discovery affects the reference point for proceeding under rule twenty-six dash one B. In other words, by finding that ball, he realized, oh gee, no, the ball couldn't have crossed the margin there, it must have crossed it over here. Then the player must correct the error. So he has to stay under rule twenty-six, but he's just correcting the error with respect to where the ball last crossed the hazard margin. Now let's compare that to the next decision, twenty-six dash one slash three point seven. Player's ball is struck towards a water hazard and is not found. It is neither known nor virtually certain that the ball's in the water hazard. But he goes ahead and drops a ball under rule twenty-six dash one B. Before playing the drop ball, his original ball is found within the five-minute search period. What is the ruling? All right, now in this case, so it's, the difference between this and the previous decision is that in this case, there was no knowledge or virtual certainty that the ball, uh, was in the hazard. Uh, it was neither known nor virtually certain the ball was in the water hazard and therefore that, uh, drop ball was incorrectly substituted under an, an inapplicable rule. So rule twenty-six, eraser rule, um, allows the player to correct a mistake by abandoning the substitute ball and continuing play with the original ball. Now, if the player failed to correct the wind clock of procedure and played the drop ball, then he's proceeded under an inapplicable rule and went back to decision twenty-six dash one slash three. Saying, uh, saying the committee will hold him to the standard of rule twenty-seven dash one for the purposes of judging his, uh, actions. So what's interesting with this is some people look at these last two decisions and say, wait a minute. The player who did more wrong, who dropped the ball without knowledge or virtual certainty, it's a better deal because he gets to play his original ball. Whereas the player who did things right, dropped the ball with knowledge or virtual certainty, is stuck with continuing with the drop ball. Why is that? Well, I mean, there's several reasons. One, because it's the answer the rules provide, but also philosophically, it, it makes sense, uh, that in the first decision, slash three point five, the player wanted to proceed under the water hazard rule. And the rules, uh, uh, let him, let him, allow him to, uh, proceed under his desired course of action. You know, he, he could have protected himself by searching for, uh, balance of the five-minute search period. But in the player in the other situation, he did do something wrong. He did something the rules did not allow him to do, but he caught his mistake before playing the ball and, uh, could play the original ball. So he does get a little bit of a break, but the player in the previous decision could have, uh, protected himself. Let's see, what else? There's a lot of the water hazard decisions are fairly, uh, straightforward. Uh, decision twenty-six dash one slash fourteen, with the, uh, interesting looking golf hole, is useful because it clarifies, when you look at the diagram with points X two and Y two, that, uh, they are not points on opposite margin, equidistant from each other because, as the final sentence of the decision says, because an imaginary straight line from X two to Y two crosses land outside the hazard. So that, uh, tells us what to look for and what not to look for when considering candidates for on opposite margin. Uh, decision twenty-six dash one slash fifteen is a helpful decision just because it, it, it goes through the, uh, leave procedure for a lot of water hazards with a nice diagram, uh, for that. Then we have decision twenty-six dash two slash one that we went over earlier. So any questions on rule twenty-six?
Yeah, I want to go back to twenty-six, one dash slash seven, which I definitely always dislike.
Twenty-six dash one slash seven, okay?
Uh, for instance, the seventeenth hole at, uh, Pine Hill, Boynton County Cove, better known. And, uh, two players, I'm appreciating as NATO, two players hit the ball down the center of the fairway. Both balls known in the water, correctly, it's a crossing river, Duck Creek, I think it's called. And, uh, so player A goes down and B, they walk them together about two hundred and fifty yards. They both look and, uh, trying to determine the point where they last crossed. So player A drops the ball after a search of about two or three minutes, you know, just trying to figure out where to drop. Drops the ball. And, uh, proceeds, uh, you know, to play the shot. Player B then is about to drop the ball and there's a spectator. Or they're saying, hey, I saw your ball, it rolled or, or drifted down the river and it's out of bounds. There's a fence there and it was out of bounds. So he goes, oh, oh, what do I do? Well, this decision says here, he, his ball is out of bounds. And since the other player, both balls were out of bounds. But one player, A, had dropped the ball and, and player B had not dropped yet. And balls were found, both balls out of bounds. So player A played the ball because he put his ball in the play, knowing that the ball is in the water. And player B, since he had not dropped, had to proceed under a lost ball.
Yeah, well, I with, this with decision twenty-six dash one slash seven, and there can be a few variations. And first, it is safe to say that this is, you know, one of the less popular decisions in the book. But on the other hand, it's, uh, largely a, by default, a necessary answer. Because if the ball is out of bounds, how can you say that it's not out of bounds? Um, and, and there can be a few ways to try to, uh, beat things. Uh, for example, if you know from past experience, if your ball goes into this, uh, uh, water hazard, that the currents always going to take it out of bounds just because it's so strong, that if you can somehow go up, put a ball in the play under, let's say, rule twenty-six dash one B before the ball goes out of bounds, then you're okay. Uh, and also, and maybe to your point, that when, if a player, uh, hits the ball into the water hazard and, and if, if it's known or virtually certain that it's in the water hazard and he drops a ball under twenty-six dash one B and only after he's put it into play, it's then determined that, oh, the ball is in fact out of bounds. Well, he would continue with that drop ball because at the moment he played it into play, it was known or virtually certain it was on the course inside the water hazard. And, uh, but if the player knows the ball is out of bounds, even in the same body of water, then he has to proceed under the out of bounds rule. And one thing that's kind of odd is you can tell the USGA is not crazy about the result with the somewhat, um, weak final paragraph. You know, in a situation where it's likely that a ball will be carried out of bounds by the flow of water in the water hazard, it's suggested that a screen be installed to prevent such an occurrence. Well, most of the situations that we hear about this, that it's a river, you know, and I've heard of, of course, of course, out in Montana where this happens and, you know, where it's a real river and you can't put a screen across it. You know, could there be other ways to do it? Maybe, you know, could there be a way to mark it so that say, okay, the water hazard, all of the river remains a water hazard going forward, but just either side of the river is out of bounds and that could be one possibility. But, um, it's, uh,
The DNR may not allow that, the navigable waterway. They, they will not allow you to put a, uh, a fence, you know, or whatever, a screen in that area. And with our court, we can't do that. It's, uh, disallowed to do that because of the flow of, you know, that's involved.
Yeah.
So, uh, and, and what happens in that river, it's very slow, meandering river most of the time. But after rainstorm or like that, it really cascades down like that. And so this happened to happen that it had rained the night before and so the flow was much greater, uh, in that round than it was in previous rounds.
Okay.
So it was, and just on courtside, the one guy dropped and then the other guy didn't drop. And then, uh, you know, he got zapped, you know, with the, so on the penalty.
There's a question online, I think it's the two of them actually, and this is a pretty good one. It says, guidelines for ruling knowledge or virtual certainty if players are looking for a ball outside of the hazard. And I think that goes to the decision twenty-six one slash one, where you're eliminating the play, just because a player is looking outside the hazard. So Bill Lineman doesn't preclude that the ball may be in the hazard.
Oh, okay, yeah. So, so the question is, if you, if as a referee, you come across a group of players, uh, searching for a ball near a water hazard, but one or more of them is searching outside the hazard, does that automatically mean that there is not going to be virtual certainty that the ball is in the hazard? And I, I agree completely with what, what Bill said, is that not necessarily. That sometimes you can establish virtual certainty by eliminating, uh, by proving in fact that the ball's not outside the hazard. That you can say, you know, look at, you know, this is the only place outside the hazard it could be and you look there and it's clearly not there. So therefore it has to be inside the hazard.
Um, then another question, how would you be able to rule the ball unplayable in a hazard while it is still in motion? And I think what he means is how would you proceed under the water hazard rule while the ball is, that's kind of live.
Yeah, so the question with the player whose ball's in a river and the current's taking it out of, towards a boundary and before it gets to the boundary, you run up and drop a ball under rule twenty-six dash one B, uh, why is that okay? And the reason that's okay is because at the moment you dropped that ball, the ball did in fact, was in fact, in a water hazard. And rule twenty-six dash one does not require the ball to be at rest in the water hazard. It just requires the ball to be in a water hazard at the moment you put this other ball.
Why is a provisional ball not allowed for a questionable stop that being into the water hazard or not? Uh, now you're required to go forward and look and you don't find it, you have to act and proceed properly. But why would it not allow it to hit a provisional ball and then go forward and look? And then if the ball is found to be in the water, you are ready, proceeded and certate that?
Well, why is a player not allowed to play a provisional ball solely in the belief that his original might be in a water hazard? And I think there are a few reasons. One is in general with the water hazard, uh, the last thing a player wants to do is to proceed under stroking distance. You know, he almost always wants to proceed under another option. And secondly, uh, because of, you know, the, just the, uh, timeframe and to make that determination and options involved, it just makes sense to say, but first determine where your ball is. Then based on that, determine your options to go for. You know, that there is a provision where a committee may allow a play of a provisional ball, a ball in a water hazard. But it's a confusing one. It's one, uh, that, you know, I, I don't really recommend because it's, has the un, it has something that's unusual, especially in stroke playing rules, because it gives a player a choice. If, if the player plays a provisional ball under that local rule for a water hazard and he finds his original ball, he can either play the original ball from the hazard or continue with the provisional ball. And, you know, as you know, that's, you know, very different from rule twenty-seven dash two than as much as possible, especially in stroke play. You don't want to give a player a choice as to, as to what to do.
Can I ask a question? Uh, the eighteenth hole of the Meadow Valley course at Black Wolf Park, where you're hitting over the spalling river. In your mind, is that a hole that you might consider allowing you to?
Well, what's interesting is that with the two women's opens held at, uh, Black Wolf One, you're talking about the eighteenth hole at Meadow Valley is the ninth hole for the women's open, that the concern isn't necessarily that you're not sure if your ball's in the hazard. The concern is whether, that you're not sure if your ball is on the bank is playable. Because in most cases, it could be pretty obvious if you're in the hazard or not. And, you know, and Bill, I think your concern is that it takes so long to walk all the way around, to walk to the bridge to the left, then walk all the way to the green, look at the ball in the hazard and then say, jeez, no, I can't play it. I've got to go back and go to the ball drop or whatever. That, that's going to take a lot of time, uh, but, and, and it would. But the, the, uh, local rule for provisional ball is intended where, for cases where it's not clear if your ball's in the hazard. Yeah, not, not for cases where it's not clear if it's playable in the hazard.
Took a long time in the US Women's Open, see how long it takes to see the tour.
Well, this is the senior tour event there in Carters.
It's so cruel. I kidding.
What's that?
Because there's a third issue. That one thing you plan to is involve twenty-six dash one, the one with the original ball after you play the provisional ball. And most people don't understand that. And that's why I always warn people, if you want to have that local rule, you're going to have to make sure that everybody understands how to implement it.
Yeah, and I, I think the local rule is intended for a case where, uh, let's say you have a green, could be, uh, you know, with, uh, water hazard on two, two or more sides and maybe you have tall cattails, so you can't really see what's over there. And hit a ball over and, you know, you just don't know. And it's going to be odd, clear, once you get over there, the ball, you're either going to find a ball outside the hazard or it's going to be inside the hazard, water hazard. Uh, you know, it's not really intended for a case where a ball might not be playable inside of water hazard.
He implemented, uh, I wouldn't be.
And is that because you, it's just hard to tell if the ball, it may have gone over and you just can't tell? Yeah, I, I, and that's exactly what the local rule is intended for. But even then, and as your experience, do you think people understand the local rule well or? So do you think it's worthwhile or do you think it creates more?
Well, I think it's worthwhile because even if they don't understand it, it saves time. That's right. I mean, and it also delays the argument about it should be marked red.
Oh, yeah. All right, well, uh, any, any other questions on rule twenty-six? Uh, why don't we, uh, skip twenty-seven and cover rule twenty-eight since that's a short rule and then we'll, uh, call it, call it a day. Uh, rule twenty-eight, dealing with the ball unplayable. A player may deem his ball unplayable at any A player may deem his ball unplayable at any place on the course except when the ball is in a water hazard. And the reason for that is we just saw that a water hazard has its own unique set of relief options. And if a player's ball's in a water hazard, that's the rule he should go to and not this. A second point with this sentence is note, just says the player may deem his ball unplayable. He doesn't have to announce that he's proceeding unplayable. He just needs to make that decision within his mind that the ball is unplayable. So for example, if Bill and I are playing together and, and let's say for simplicity, it's stroke play. And I hit my ball way off into the trees and it winds up in a bush and I deem it unplayable with Bill's in the middle of the fairway. I don't have to yell back, Bill, I'm going, I'm deeming this unplayable. I can just do, make that decision for myself, drop within two club lengths or whatever the best relief option is and go on. The player is the sole judge as to whether his ball is unplayable. And this is the second place in the rules we've seen where the rules go out of their way to say that only the player may do something, that he may not even authorize someone else to do something for him. And the other was under rule twenty dash two A, where it said the player himself must drop the ball. So if the player deems his ball unplayable, he has three options, each one with one penalty stroke. A, proceed under the stroke and distance provision. B, drop a ball behind the point where the ball lay, keeping that point between the hole and the spot on which the ball's dropped. With no limit to how far behind that point the ball may be dropped. And, or C, drop a ball within two club lengths of the spot where the ball lay, but not near the hole. Now, with these last two options, that's important to keep in mind that the reference point is the ball's original unplayable position. So it could well be that one or both of these options might not result in a playable position. That for example, you'd have a player in the middle of a bunch of bushes and two club lengths keeps him in the bushes. So that means two club lengths might not be the best option in that case. If the unplayable ball is in a bunker, the player may proceed under clause A, B, or C. But if he proceeds under B or C, i.e. not under stroke and distance, then he has to drop in the bunker. In that case. Penalty for breach of this rule is the general, general penalty, loss of hole or two strokes. So for example, if a player drops three club lengths to the side of where his ball lay and play unplayable, or replaces instead of drops, under option B or C. So let's look at some decisions under it. Decision twenty-eight slash three. A player deemed his ball unplayable and under the two club length option, dropped his ball. The ball came to rest in the original position or another position at which the ball is unplayable. What is the ruling? Alright, well, in the back of our minds, you know, this is kind of an example of the saying, a little knowledge is a dangerous thing. Because in the back of our minds, we say, well, we know there's something under rule twenty dash two C that says, well, if you take relief, you drop the ball and you still have interference, you have to take complete relief. For example, with the cart path. But that does not apply in this situation. That rule twenty, that provision, rule twenty dash two C five is a very, outlines the rules under which you have to re-drop the ball. So there's no guarantee under rule twenty-eight or under rule twenty for a playable position after being the ball unplayable. So therefore, as the answer says, the ball was in play when it was dropped. Thus, if it came to rest in the original position, the player either has to play it or must again invoke the unplayable ball rule, incurring the additional penalty stroke under that rule.
Can I ask a question? So you're an official. You come to a situation such as the left side of the ninth pole on the Meadow Valley Course at Blackwell Front. And a player lifts the ball, I mean, deems the ball unplayable, lifts it, drops it almost two club lengths. The ball strikes within two club lengths and rolls back into what is for sure an unplayable position. And before you can say anything, the player lifts the ball from that unplayable position. Under the guise that he has to retract.
Okay.
Before you can get the words out of your mouth, he's done that.
Okay, alright.
The player gets the eighteen dash two penalty and then you get to tell him, you have to declare it unplayable again.
Alright, that's a good question. So the player, player's ball is in a bad area and he deems it unplayable, drops it in two club lengths. And the ball rolls back to the, into the original unplayable position. And you're a referee on the hole and before you can get there to say anything to him, he lifts that ball thinking mistakenly that he has to re-drop it under rule twenty dash two C. He lifts the ball, drops it, and then you get there and you say, you know, hold on, you weren't doing this right. So the question, your question is, does he incur the penalty stroke on rule eighteen dash two for having lifted the ball after the first drop? And then do you have to tell him? Well, you have a penalty stroke for lifting the ball and you have to replace it. And after you replace the ball, if you don't want to play it from there, then you can declare it unplayable again. And the answer is yes, so that's exactly what you do.
And then run.
Yeah, and then, you know, that's a, that's a realistic situation. And then one point to keep in mind, and let's look at the decision on the opposite page that's somewhat related to this. When a player makes a bad decision, twenty-eight slash five, regression under the unplayable ball rule. Player plays a stroke from A to B. Point B is an area from which it's very difficult to extricate the ball. He considers deeming the ball unplayable, but knows that realistically, stroke and distance is the best option. This dropping under rule twenty-eight B is impossible because of a boundary fence behind him. And dropping within two club lengths under twenty-eight C is not feasible because it would require a considerable number of drops to escape the area. So what does the player do? He makes a bad decision. He plays from point B and moves the ball only a few feet to point C, where the ball is clearly unplayable. So now, what are, where do all his relief options taken? So now, where does the stroke and distance option taken? A few feet away into a play, unplayable position. Now, let's see. Now, the player is entitled to drop a ball only at the place from which he last played his stroke. So in these circumstances, the player's best option is probably going to be to deem his ball unplayable multiple times. And use the two club length option of twenty-eight C until he can reach a point where it is playable. So, so what does all that mean is that before the player played the ball, you really need to think long and hard. Because that decision to play the ball, which turned out to be a bad decision, could cost him three, four, or five penalty strokes. That could be a very expensive, poor decision for him to have made.
What do you mean, you go twenty-eight, one eight? You know, after you made poor decision, dropped and, and, and extrude a penalty stroke and then go back to the original point with another penalty stroke?
Well, like, I think the key is that in this case, the player, he actually, well, he plays the ball. You know, he play, he plays the ball as it lies. So once he plays it, then all of a sudden, twenty-eight A is where he just played from. That, let's say, if this was his tee shot, put him in this area, that as soon as he plays from the area, the tee disappears as an option. So it's different from rule twenty-six dash two in that regard. Let's see. Not, one decision that's worthwhile that we'll go over, and we've gone over one similar to it, but I'll do this again just because it contains several valid points. It's twenty-eight slash fifteen. And we'll also touch on rule fifteen, we discussed. Player finds a straight ball which he mistakenly thinks is his in a bad lie. He deems it unplayable and decides to use the two club length option. He drops the straight ball within two club lengths of the spot where it lay and plays it. So at that point, after he's now played this other ball, what's the status of the original ball? It's lost. He then finds his original ball in a playable position. You know, what is the ruling in this case? Well, the procedures in rules twenty-eight B and C may not be applied except with reference to the position of the player's ball in play. In the present case, the straight ball dropped and played, it was not his original ball, it was a substituted ball. And since at that time, you know, when he put the second ball into play, the location of the original ball was not known. He was required to proceed under rule twenty-seven dash one. That's the only rule that allowed him to drop and play another ball. But the substitute ball was not dropped at the spot required by rule twenty-seven dash one, i.e. not at the spot of the previous stroke. So he played from the wrong place, match play loses the hole in stroke play. He'll incur a penalty stroke for the stroke and distance option, plus two more strokes for playing from the wrong place. And then there's the possibility of a serious breach of playing from the wrong place. A possibility slash probability of playing a serious breach of playing from the wrong place. So a lot going on there. Another example of where a player is proceeded under an inapplicable rule and the committee has to assign, has to assign a rule to judge his actions. So any questions on rule twenty-eight? Alright, well, if not, we're all set for next Thursday at eight AM. And we promise this won't change at this time. And again, I apologize for the changes for this week and thank you for flexibility. And next week, we'll finish things up. We'll start with rule twenty-seven and then we'll cover rules twenty-nine through thirty-four. You get everyone in, hopefully, in good shape before the PGA/USGA class. So thank you. Really, just the times listed in rule twenty-one, those three times. That any other, you know, when it's, you've looked there.